We call the Newport City Council meeting to order from Monday, November 18, 2019, 6:30 PM. City Council, we're all members of the council are present. Others include Laura Dogan, our City Manager, and James Johnson, our Clerk Treasurer. The next item is to approve the minutes of November 4, 2019. Entertain a motion. Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Eyes have it. Motion carries. Next is comments by members of the public. We have Anita Ansel to discuss driveway access.
I actually have three requests tonight. One of them, my whole weekend, you just say yeah, of course, and a couple others to take under consideration. One is that snow gets piled up in front of our driveway and we can't get in and out unless we drive over the sidewalk and into the yard. And either can field, and I've got pictures I'll show you, on field trucks, garbage trucks, whatever. I'm also asking that perhaps you consider putting that this is a dead-end street and there's no outlet because people just drive down and turn and these are our driveway as a turnaround. And I think they think our driveway is a road because they do nothing but come and turn around and leave. They don't get out of their car or anything, they just so it would help them and it would help us. And the other thing is we like to consider having just parking on one side of the street. It's pretty tight if there's cars on both sides for my husband's truck to get out, but also I wonder if the fire truck could get through if there's parking on both sides. So I do have some pictures of this, so you just don't have to make me up. On the first page is the snow from last year and how it looks currently. The red lines are where our driveway actually is. So you can see that those little bushes, they didn't make a payment, they got trampled and sort of the edging and everything I had on the flower area. So you can see the current, I've got another bush there that I'd really like to see next spring of moving again. What happens is they come and they dump snow there. So that's not just getting piled to the end of the road, they actually come and dump snow. On the back of that page is this happened on October 4. They were removing equipment from down by the Gateway Center and they had our driveway blocked for about an hour and no one had ever hit us. And it looked like this street here was totally open, parking lot was totally open, but for some reason they parked it in front of our place and totally blocked the driveway. The next page is you can see that people just come and park sometimes and double park. They don't really, sometimes they're just parking in the middle of the street. Sometimes they park and they just stand there. That particular day, I waited for about 13 minutes and then I thought I gotta go. So I was just gonna ask them if they could move, but somebody with a car and told the person to get in and they drove away. But they just, parking tends to be kind of odd at that end. And the last page is just some pictures of people turning around in our driveway. This red truck was recent, he actually went all the way up to the garages before he placed it. It's not a street, I guess, I don't know. So it's an issue for us. There's not too many days that go by where someone's not turning around in that driveway. So is it, can I, can we be assured that at least the snow isn't gonna be piled up in front of our driveway this year?
Normally, people just call us up and we have a conversation so we know what the issues are. So I would recommend maybe you give us a call tomorrow and we'll schedule an appointment. Is it now?
Well, I thought driveways would be like fire hydrants that you can't really block. Would be a safety thing of being able to get in and out of your driveway. What would we talk about?
We would set out some expectations. Why is that bad?
Why is blocking the driveway bad?
No, why is it bad for you to come in and talk to us about it?
Because I'm here talking to everyone now.
You're welcome to do that, but you're also, if you'd like to get something done where we could actually be.
Is it really legal to block the driveway?
Oh, we've got the photos, we've got this. I'm actually gonna give my copy to the manager, but she didn't get one. Maybe the Public Works Director would like a copy since we'll see what can be done to solve the issue. You know, that'll be, we don't normally take any action from public comment. Public comment is just comments. And so I've given the photos to the City Manager, I've given it to Tom Burner here, and we'll see what can be done to resolve the issue.
Okay, thank you.
I should ask him a question?
Okay.
I'm not sure what the resolution you're hoping for is.
I'm hoping that snow, oh, for this part?
Yeah, for the.
I don't want snow blocking my driveway. And a sign that would not have people coming and just turning around so it would tell them that it's, there's no outlet, that it's a dead-end. One of those signs. I don't know which one the city uses, but we still don't know because obviously they don't know. And I did a little experiment when that electrical box was really bad down there and there was like a bunch of orange cones. I moved going over to the center of the driveway and whenever that was there, nobody came and turned around. Obviously, they thought it was a road. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. The next item, the downtown designation presentation. Mr. Holloway sent an email earlier today that he wasn't gonna make it, so we need to table this item until the December 2 meeting. So I would.
It was because of weather, right?
It was because of the weather, right. He emailed, he was concerned, he was driving up and he was concerned about the forecast for ice. And so he canceled earlier today based upon the forecast this morning. And technically, the earlier forecast had us in freezing rain right now. Well, the whole thing slowed down, but you can't, you know, can't change your plans. He had already emailed plenty of time to let us know that he wasn't gonna make it. So I would wanna have a motion to table this until the December 2 meeting. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Eyes have it. Motion carries. That'll be on the December 2 meeting. The next item is event subcommittee presentation on the guidebook. Proposed street closure policy and events permit. And who is the designated person to present it?
I think I'll start.
Okay.
I think everybody knows that way back in the beginning, they voted no on the policy. The policy was implemented for a year and it kinda got stuck in limbo for a while. Now, the other reason it's coming so late is because I didn't make some of the meetings. And they wanted to make sure that I was agreeable with what was here. And I think everybody knows that I wanted it simplified and they didn't want it to be objective. I wanted it to be the person files an application and it stands on its own. So this guidebook was based on failure rates for the mayor and we extracted a lot of information. And the guidebook pretty much walks you through the process. Before, for the process to work, you pretty much had to work with Mrs. Booth in her room going over every little detail with you and trying to help you along. Well, this covers that. And it doesn't preclude someone going to her and saying, "I don't quite understand what you want here." One of the big issues that we had was with the parades. So there's gonna be a policy for the parades that's in here. And I think it answers some of the questions that people had. We were always talking about money, money not being available. Is four parades too much or too little? Well, what this does, the city will sponsor four parades up to $1,000. And it details the process of applying for that. Now, it doesn't preclude that we can only have four parades. What it does do is say that the city will sponsor and pay up to $1,000 for four. So it's possible it could be a fifth and a sixth parade, but people would have to find The application has been very simplified. All right? I think the most important part of the application is the back page, which has the department heads, aha, usually they're on my head. All right, so what it has is reviewed, recommend approval with no conditions or recommend approval with conditions. And that would be recreation, the police department, the fire department, and public works. Because they all have a hand in what's gonna happen. All right, public works, when it's a parade, we'll be putting up barriers, doing other things. The fire chief, we're gonna have emergency service access to any venue. The police department, the conditions that have to be met. Do we have an event that requires two police officers rather than one? Or do we have to set up some hypersystem? So I think it's either recommend approval with no conditions, recommend with conditions, and then it's the final one that says, "Do not recommend approval." All right? I don't think you'd ever see that used. And I hope people understand, this doesn't preclude somebody coming to the council. All right? The council is open to everybody in the public. And if they can't get on the agenda, guess what? You can still come in and get under public comments if you've got something to say. And you can always come to a council member. Council members, I thought, are always available to somebody who served for the public. Because what are we here for? All right? Serving the public. So this meets what I was, I cared about. All right, before, I thought the process wasn't that objective. And the difference I had was that policies are supposed to be an internal operational thing. It's not supposed to be, here's what you've gotta do as a citizen. And when the first one came out, I always feel that if a policy takes away my judgment, then I'm not happy with it. You know, if it's very strict and here's what you gotta do step by step, then it takes that judgment away from me. You'll never see me approve a policy. And this isn't a policy. It's a process and an application. And if we wanted to set something up that rules for the public, those types of things fall under ordinances. They don't follow under, under policy. So for me, this one I can actually vote for. So if you have any questions for me or any of the members of the board, I think the time would be now.
Can I have just a couple of things?
Yeah.
Okay. As Dan explained, the permit application, there's a couple, there's something else to, I think is an important point to make in addition, is that this is a process for folks to be able to talk to the departments that are involved. So if, if a department head feels that there's an issue that probably, you know, the plan probably isn't the best, there's a better way to do it or would meet the needs better, that's the, that's why this is here, so that the organizer and the department heads can talk about it and work it out. So that's the first thing. And then the second thing is that the special permit application is for events of 200 or more on municipal property. So if you wanna have an event at the municipal building and you're thinking 50 people are coming, you don't have to go through this. This is for 200 or more people on municipal property.
Anything else to add before I, questions from council members?
I guess I would just also like to add that I would like to thank Dan and Dana Lyskrenz and Jamie Comtoys, Mary Pat Goulding, Jen Smith, Jim was involved, for the amount of time that this took. We thought we were gonna be like two or three meetings, we were eight meetings and it spread over prior few months. So the dedication of the public put on it because we had no chance to not counsel people on this was very important. We, again, did very much appreciate that the time put in, that they put into this.
No, I think you did a great job from looking at the document, in my opinion.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
First one being, it seems that Jim is now appointed as the point of contact for anybody initiating. And I just find that a little bit comical. Is that all right with you?
Well, I guess I'm a new person in the deal, so they get the application from Jazz Group, it's permanent, they bring it to me.
So like.
And I'll bring it all forward along.
The only thing is I kept most of the initial inquiries spoken through our office. I wish I would send whoever this material and say, "Once you've got this filled out, then you can check in with Jim." But the idea was to try to take you away from the direct department and because Jim handles the other departments. It's simple, most guys.
I don't know about.
I don't see where it specifies 200 people or more. I would suggest adding that if that was the intention, unless I missed it somewhere. And I don't think. It is, it is, it's not just 200 people or more, it's 200 people or more or you want it.
Street closures.
Street closures or something that impacts the flow of traffic. So it's, but we can put that on here. I think I'd be all ready to specify that this is for all those sort of things. The chances are they won't get this unless they meet that criteria. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Comments on the policy? And we had it down for a vote, so if you want, I'll have a motion, if you so choose, that'll open it up to the floor.
I'll make a motion to approve the guidebook parade policy and application.
A motion, sorry, a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Now discussion, there was anyone in the council, anymore from the council before I go out to anybody in the audience?
I guess I do have a clarification. The last paragraph right above parades says that it's the event organizer's responsibility to inform effective businesses and residents once your permit has been approved. Just wondering what would be best practice? What do you envision that would look like? Because what I hear that, I'm thinking knocking on every door and that sounds pretty burdensome. It is, but that's the, that's, it says, the next sentence says, "The most effective method is a personal visit to share pertinent dates, information, and details." Really, the event organizer can plan to notify businesses and residents any way that they wish to, but the most effective way, like you said, is to go door to door. So if they choose not to do that, then we end up with businesses and residences that are then upset after the fact and say, "I didn't know about this, I didn't know that this street was gonna be closed," or, so that really is, that's what we do when we close for events on Main Street, that really is the best practice and it is burdensome. But that's kind of what we choose to put about when we choose to post an event if you wanna do it the right way. Thank you.
So I just wanna make sure, 'cause I've noticed in the guidebook, there's, the fees and things aren't listed, but that's on the website, correct?
It's on the website and those fluctuate from year to year. They have the approval every time, so our hope is that this will not have to be updated every year. Certainly available to be if we need to change something, but we kind of wanted to let it be scanned along. We probably could make some references in here, if you can find that information. I can't remember if it's already in there or not, but I'd like to point people in the right direction.
Anyone? And we do have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for all your work for the committee members on this, this policy. The next item is designate handicap parking space in Central Street Parking. And we have Charlie and Elliot.
So Mr. Samada, property owner, is also here, but I'll briefly explain it. At 42 Central Street, he is paying rent to a new tenant and they require handicap access to the building. That is one of the older buildings in the city where parking is traditionally on city property, mainly in that parking lot. To achieve handicap access requirements, he also has to have a van accessible parking location. He's redesigned the ramp several times to avoid issues with the city and also to keep the ramp on his own property, but the parking space still has to come out of the city's parking lot. So the reason we're here tonight is to explain it to you and because it's city property, usage of it in any manner comes back to you. This parking spot down there, in my opinion, it will satisfy his needs for those rare occasions when his, as a tenant, tenants have a client that require it. It is also a public access and public parking lot that can be used by other handicap people to gain access to the city. And I envision somebody, a handicap, that have their motorized vehicles, for example, motorized chairs, that would be one place where they could get off and liberate toward the downtown. It'd also, for him, would serve his purposes. I'll let him, Mr. Samad, explain it to you in a little more detail.
All right, thank you, Charlie. So I have, the Orleans County is a child advocacy center, they work closely with the police department, both Newport and state. Basically, they have signed a lease, they're looking to move in, however, they need the space to be made ADA compliant. So I'm currently working on doing that. This morning, I actually received an approval from the fire chief, so we're gonna get started this weekend. However, as Charlie mentioned, we do need a designated handicap parking spot. So we envision having it in the rightmost space of the parking lot, which is, if you look at the sharpening shed, it's all the way on the right, that's where the ramp would begin and end. And basically, again, as Charlie mentioned, we redesigned the ramp many times to make sure that it's not on city property, so this is really the only place where we can put the ramp. So that's the place where I envision having the handicap spot.
Just one other comment. The location it was settled on at the back, there is no work that needs to be done in the parking lot, it's designated it to be painted. There's, there's no curb tuts or anything required for the handicap people to move over into the walkway down the ramp.
I do have a couple of photos, if you're interested. We've actually marked off the area where the ramp is going to be, you can see that here, from a couple of different angles. So the place where we envisioned having the parking spot is, if you look at the building, this is the sharpening shed here. So it's this corner right here, and the ramp would end right around where the propane tanks are here.
So it's at the back of the parking lot? It's the farthest from the road, right?
Yes, the farthest from the road, yeah.
This is a more detailed drawing, if you're, again, looking at the building from the
front, this is where the space would be, so both the van and the space next to it.
Okay. Any questions from you? Then we would need a motion to designate a handicap spot in the, in the parking lot. I'm not sure if we have a specific name for that parking lot, Tom?
Central Street, right.
Central Street, right, okay. Well, it'd be for the 42 Central Street building, if you put it that way.
I moved it through the handicap parking spot for the 42 Central Street building in the public parking spot lot there.
Okay. Motion's been made, is there a second?
One second.
Seconded in discussion? Sorry.
Do you want a cleaner version or a marital version? Move to approve the handicap parking spot with the 42 Central Street building in the public parking lot adjacent. How's that? Pretty good?
Sounds good.
So a motion was made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? And hearing?
My question would be, is it dedicated to that building or is it a public handicap spot?
It would be public, I think, as Charlie mentioned, so anybody could use it. If it's somebody in the building, they could obviously park there, but anybody else using that parking spot could also use it.
All right, any other questions? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Eyes have it. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The next item is the audit review and set, the FY 2021 budget schedule. Turn over to the City Manager.
We've all been given a hard copy of that audit. And what I would do is bring your attention, this is posted on our website, by the way, under news, so if you scroll through our 17 news items, I think this is probably fourth or fifth. What I would point out is on page three, the bottom of page three, those numbers will match the restricted that you approved on December 21st, excuse me, October 21st, and that's included in your packet. That's also posted on our website, it's this colorful chart. So as we go through the year, we'll keep updating that chart with any decisions that you make, but I wanted to point that page out. And the other thing that I would point out is simply the water and sewer funds, also known as our enterprise funds. And that's on page seven and eight. And it just gives our net position at the end of the year. And we are very pleased with the outcome, as we have been each year. It's a lot of teamwork that goes into this. It starts at the mid-June and we got this, I think we received it third last Thursday. That's how long the process is and how intense. So I'm quite pleased with the results. So kudos to Jim's office and Becky and to the department heads from AKO, and others that we can be proud of. So the rubber meets the road.
So I guess what I would recommend is have everyone, if you so choose, to go through it. And any questions, just ask the.
If you're not gonna keep your books, please ask them to return because we'll put them in our inventory. Yeah. Otherwise.
Okay.
And then the next thing, you have been delivering a lot of work on this too. And this has been posted on our website, I think it's actually the first thing, that if you go into other news or into our latest news on our website, you'll find it. The memo is included, the restricted is included in each page that you have is on our website. So what we've normally done is we've scheduled a night of review. We let the department heads know when to be expected to make their presentations. We schedule their presentations and we typically schedule an executive session in case there's anything confidential that the department heads wanna discuss. And typically, you've been able to do one or two reviews a session. We've scheduled some reviews to happen at regular meetings and some reviews to happen at special meetings. So I, I leave it to you, the deadline would be early January. So I don't know how much you wanna look at this, but we can also schedule a special meeting on Mondays, and that's why the department heads are here, so they can get a handle on how you like to proceed from here.
Usually worked on at the off Monday of council meetings unless we have a light agenda. Like the next meeting, I would recommend it with Mr. Holloway coming to, you know, that was gonna be about half hour presentation, his presentation. So I wouldn't, you know, I would recommend we do off, I don't know, the council, but the other Monday. So if we really wanna look at the first Monday that I was thinking of would be the 9th of December. That, does that work?
Yeah. So you would do December 9th, and who would you like to review on December 9th? So you would do December 9th, and who would you like to review on December 9th? Which department gets to be the first one to go? Do you want to do the big one first? Let's start out that way.
Well, we could do, we could go in the order, we could do admin.
Yep.
And then, I mean, we could do tour night, I would assume, we could do admin and police.
All right, so we plan on admin, police on December 9th.
You may have to do two on some nights, because we've got the Hevlist thing by the way.
No, that's what I'm saying, we're going to do admin and police.
Come file for the annual report.
Admin and police those nights.
How do you feel about meeting on December 23rd?
I have no problem, I have no problem with that, that's what I was thinking.
Won't be able to do the rec department that night, because we're planning a date with Santa.
What if you were to meet on a, say, a Wednesday, the 18th, for a special meeting?
Wednesdays aren't always good for me.
So if we met the 23rd, could we do fire and public works on the 23rd?
We could do fire, public works.
Is that okay with you, Jamie?
Yep.
Tom, you're around.
And then we could also maybe do other, because there's not a, you know.
Jess has to be around for other.
Oh, that's right.
Yep.
Capital also, but those.
So rec and capital would.
Rec, capital, and other, actually, we could do those.
Yep.
We could do those on, but we're getting into the year 2020.
Do you want to do that one on December 30th? Again, is that too close to the holidays?
On December 30th.
I don't know if that's great.
I would, I don't know, that's fine with me, I think, but.
Is it okay with you, Jess? And that means the department heads will have to be here, because we're doing other than capital. You good?
So we're looking at the 9th, 23rd, and the 30th, so far.
Hopefully, that's all you'll need. So rec, capital, and other on the 30th. I assume we're going to meet on these, for these special meetings, we could meet at 6:00, maybe? Remember, we meet at 6:30?
6:30 is better.
6:30.
I mean, because I don't get out of work some nights till, right before the meeting.
All right, 6:30, we'll warn those as special meetings.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is that all right with the council?
Yes.
Off nights, or just basically, who are you doing on the 30th?
The 30th is recreation, capital, and other. Thank you. Let's hope the rest of it goes that easy.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
I just want to do, make sure that the public may not be there on those nights, but that it is understood that if the public shows up, we will be allowed to ask questions and give input.
Yes, that's been said numerous times.
Just making sure.
And I'm, I, I hold my word, don't, you know, don't have to keep harping on it. Yes, the public will be allowed to have input. I, the council agreed, it was a suggestion that was made, and we all agreed to it, and so yes.
Great.
But not until after the department heads present. That was the agreement. Give the department heads the courtesy to present their budget first, before it opened it up to the floor. That's just common courtesy to the public, I mean, to the, to the department heads. Another thing about the budget, any changes we make will be immediately posted to the web. It's set up with a link, so that someone could actually be sitting at home, and if we make changes, they could see it in real time.
Cool.
And so that's something that I don't think of any other municipality that I know who does that, where you can see live changes on the internet for the public. All right, we'll move on. Mr. Johnson, new business. Mr. Charbonneau, please, we're going.
Just one quick question. The website is looking lovely, I was just wondering, do we have a new web designer? What's going on?
That was approved last year, in last year's budget, and we hired Hagan and Associates at Burlington, owned by a philanthropist and a female entrepreneur, and she's been working on it for about three months, so it's gone live. And there's a few things that we're still working out with it, as you do with any new website launch, but we're very happy with it.
Great, thank you.
And we liked the old one, I just want to acknowledge, the mayor put the old one together, and he did it out of the goodness of his heart, his, his heart was definitely in that, so we're still using the baseline of what the mayor presented, we're able to preserve that, so it really happened. It's still word in press, we're still using the same Google Drive, so I just want to acknowledge your work and thank you for that.
And during the transition, as I say, there might be some things not there, some things there, like anytime you transition, sometimes things don't always appear, or you have to get used to a new format.
I'm sure it'll be brought to our attention.
Yes, it has been.
Okay. But yes, I'm pleased with the site.
Yes.
Looks, looking good. All right. I don't have anything new, anything new, anything?
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, old business.
Yeah, I do. So now I'll bring up this loan again.
Did you get it straightened out?
And now it says 10 biannual installments, instead of 10 monthly installments. So this loan has already been approved, all we need to do is sign the paperwork. There are, please sign your front page and the copies, so I have a copy of that file. And I will forward it on.
So, Jim, is this a free-range signature, or do I have to look for my name?
You've got to look for your name. And it's Howard S. at, by the way.
D-A-M.
Right over mine.
I didn't check the beer this time, no.
Are you putting that on the expense?
If I could. Wouldn't cost the city much.
Yep, there's two, it's the next page. Right there. I almost pointed.
Lead me astray.
We all follow directions.
Yes. And you'll have to sign it, but, don't worry about it. That's it, you all, you had for old business?
That's it.
Mr. Charbonneau? Anything? The next regularly-scheduled council meeting will be Monday, December 2nd, 2019, 6:30 PM, and we need a motion to adjourn at 7:11.
I'll wait for that one.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I finished, have to adjourn at 7:11. This door, not at 7:11.